And with that, we'll go to the next item is a discussion for special permit application, Bay Point Country Club. Let me guess, it's you guys. If you would join us at the table and give us an overview of what you've got here.
Good evening. I am Mr. President of Stone Street Corporation. With me this evening is Don Layton from Beta Engineering Group, Tom Fattaro from the Stone Street Corporation, and Mr. Principi from Principi Engineering.
Is the light on on the microphone?
Yes, it is. This evening, we're here for preliminary approval for our housing development plan at the Bay Point Club. And Don Layton has a series of renderings that we would like to walk you through and try to describe exactly what it is we're thinking for the Bay Point Club.
Good evening. I'm going to just walk through what the plans are. I just wanted to make note that these were the engineering plans that I think you probably have in front of you. What we did is just to be able to give a clear overview, we put the plans together so you can see the entire 120 acres. And I thought what I would do is walk through the main road into the site, talk about the things that are being either slightly modified or greatly modified, give you a handle on what we're attempting to do. So coming right in from the main road, the access road generally stays right where it is. We have the new pavilion up on the left that's been renovated and is currently hosting wedding parties and other events. That would stay exactly as it is. The road as it comes in is going to be slightly modified because we also have a condition where Cedar property, which is currently leased through 2018, I believe, sits directly to the right side. So anything that's within that property would stay as it is today. The parking lot would stay just as it is. The clubhouse would stay just as it is. But the roadway itself would be modified slightly so that there would be a continuous traffic circulation back to Bay Point Drive. So there's a slight modification of the road in this location. Once we're back to Bay Point Drive, it stays right on top of where it is today. And these would be the beginnings of duplex units that you would see on the left side of the road as it steps up the hill. Get a little further off the hill, road stays right where it is, and there would be duplex units on the right side. There are modifications to the golf course itself, some slight modifications to do these sort of accommodations. The biggest change within the golf course is that the current barn facilities, maintenance facilities are right in here. That would be transplanted to what is currently called the cart barn. And all of the maintenance would be directly in and out, so we don't have equipment going into the center of the site. So that would be the one major change in terms of the golf course function, is to bring that maintenance over into the cart barn. And then the second major change is a whole new road system that wraps down around the perimeter of the property. There's one section that stays close to an existing road. There's an existing road that comes right basically under these single-family units, these smaller boxes of the single-family units, had water in the road. But because of the playability of the course, we've had to slide that road back a little bit so that we have the proper distances between the golf course and the rear side of these units. There's 115 units between single-family homes, which are generally clustered in this area, and the duplex homes that are in these two areas with a couple scattered down in here. There's 115 units total. The architecture is still being worked out, but generally they're smaller homes, one, two-bedroom homes, one car garage. This was not submitted in the package, but these are diagrams that help us start to understand the spacing, the setbacks of these homes. This is a typical section that is located right, right in here. So we've looked at the topography, which is generally flat in that area, and looked at how to take smaller homes, probably ranging from 1,500 square feet to 1,800 square feet, and place them within the existed wooded area. Because that's the other thing that we're very interested in, is trying to stay close to the existing grade, so that the closer we are, the more existing trees we can select to maintain and keep in and around the development. The duplex homes are generally sited on a little more of a terrain, the hillside going up Bay Point Drive as I described. This shows them rather flat, but they've also been designed, and we've worked with an architect that says that at the point where they interface, these units can step up. So when we get a little further along in the design, the duplex units will be stepping up this topography up this hill, and you'll probably have a little more articulation to the units themselves. Square footage would stay generally the same, again, one car garages with 1600 to 1800 square feet per unit. There are some technical aspects that some Principi can get into, but one of them in general was understanding drainage and locating within the plan drainage areas. So again, these shaded areas are indicating points within the property that we're going to need to collect water, either from the new roadway, the rooftops. And in one particular area, we would like to propose not only collecting the water, but reusing the water for irrigation. So this more testament we need to look at, so we're proposing that there'd be a wet pond in this location that could augment the existing pond that we have for irrigation generally up on this side of the course, would alleviate a lot of the demand on the existing pond as it is. The, I should have started right off of that with a little description of what you're looking at, but the dark green that's shown are the existing trees that we're certainly intending to maintain. The light green is generally the course with the layout of the holes shown. Again, the modifications to the course basically work around relocating the maintenance facility, which is in the center of everything, off to the side, so that this new road configuration of presidential housing can occur. We've talked about the fact, from a safety point of view, there is an opportunity for second means of begress off an existing road that's located down here. Again, this road comes in currently, the small dirt road, but we're trying to fine-tune the plan with the second means of begress, we've looked at that, and we'll continue to look at that. I think that's a general overview. Again, the preliminary work is showing that 115 units can be supported by town water, and the sewer has been looked at in preliminary point of view, and that is capable of handling these issues as well. Any questions on just that part of that? Did I cover it?
Excellent.
Public hearing coming over now.
Sure.
Public hearing, preliminary.
Yeah, just brief, yeah.
When do you intend to go to a definitive plan, or do you?
Yes, yes, we do. We're just looking for comments from the board tonight to see if we can address any of those comments that it might have tonight to apply this to the definitive plan stage, but we do plan on proceeding to that. And I'd just like to just give a quick overview, not to radiate anything, but I would like to just let you know where we've been with the approval process, and I have a brief timeline that I just wanted to discuss with you. We were here for a pre-approval meeting back in November, and after that, we met with Guy Campina, the Sewer Department, and also Paul Makowski, I believe is his name, from Onset Water District, and we received several comments from Guy and Paul regarding the whole development, which we are going to apply to the whole plan set when we apply for definitive. And also too, is on November 14th, we met with all the town officials, which I have notes of meeting on, which we got feedback from also the Water Department, the Fire Department, PPW Director, Conservation Commission Agent, as well as some other agents involved in the permanent process. We also had a meeting in December 10th of last year, actually in this very room, the Board of Selectment Sewer Commission Office, to grant approval for our flow increase for the entire development. I believe that flow is for 37,950 gallons per day, which would accommodate the 115 proposed units that we have here on site. We also had a few other meetings with Guy Campina over at the Sewer Department, who are working very closely with Dan and Paul over at the Water Department to try and make sure that everything gets portrayed here on our definitive plan sets. We also did some pump station testing with Onset Pier Pump Station per Guy Campina to make sure that it is adequate and can handle the flow of the proposed development. And we also just recently, just June 18th, we were with a RDS company that maintains a private pump station here for the Bay Point Club to monitor and analyze the pump station here on site, because we do plan on tying in all these duplex units over here to the north into this private pump station, which then discharges out to the Onset Pier and South Water Street Pump Station. So we want to make sure that we're not, you know, we're mitigating our excess volume and not causing any problems to the town's pump stations. So that's one of the requirements that the Board of Select had with the flow increase.
Now, a previous owner, I think, entered into an agreement with Onset Water regarding the water tower and the access. That issue has all been resolved, as far as they're concerned. A previous plan that was done a few years back, there was a disagreement, I think, between Onset Water and the owner. I thought they'd come to an agreement.
We have no disagreement with them whatsoever, and this plan doesn't impact that whatsoever. The easements and the road, everything remains exactly as it is.
So that Kahoon Street goes all the way, all the way through at one point. So Kahoon Street went all the way through the course at one point, and section F was changed to Bay Point Drive, or something?
There's a naming of it?
That's what it looks like, because it's listed as Kahoon in your plan on the...
Yeah, Kahoon had a defusable easement cul-de-sac, which then got converted to Bay Point Drive, and now cuts through the entire property. So Kahoon Street was built prior to Bay Point Drive for those condominium developments?
Could you touch on your intentions relative to the roads? Will they remain private roads, or is your hope to try to get them to be public roads? The new roads?
The new roads will be private ones.
Private? And maintain that way?
Yes.
A lot of times, the golfers will come in and say, oh, they're going to be private. As soon as they get a vote, if this is a house done, there's a group of people shows up at the town meeting, and they would like the town to take over the roads, and it comes to a real debate upfront.
The new roads are planning, we're planning on them being private roads? The town currently maintains Bay Point Drive and Kahoon, the roads that exist.
It maintains Kahoon from the center all the way down back to the main drive, the road town maintains?
Yes, it does.
And that's a private road?
Cedar owns the road. In and where it turns? Okay.
Okay, because what's the deal on town maintaining private roads now? Is that a done deal or?
No, all we did was, the vote was to go ahead and use a couple of money on private roads, which had abnormal access through, except for restricted access in town.
I guess one thing that I see is that the section which appears to be Kahoon Road at some point cuts through a lot of your lots. So I don't know what the standing is from that old roadway, is it?
Would that be down here, sir?
Is this what you're referring to, this area?
Yeah, and if you follow it all the way through, it connects to Kahoon on the other end.
Road dead ends here, and this is a gravel road, which does have utilities in it that runs through the course, presumably. And what our proposal has is to shift this road over just a few feet, so the road will move over a little bit, and that's where the lots would be. It's down heading straight, that also a playability here.
I understand what you're hoping to do, I just question whether we need to terminate the existence of Kahoon Road, or if there's some action that has to be taken to move it out of your watch of creating, if it in fact has any legal standing at all, other than a gravel road?
I don't know. We just, we tend to simply shift it over, whether to rebuild it or not, it's really just a gravel structure. It's not used to that, from this form to this.
That's going to require plot plan revision, right?
Yeah, I don't know what...
How would you get approval for that? Where do you need to get approval for that?
Well, I don't think it's a town away, per se. I don't know if there's any way we have to know of that.
As long as there's no other rebuttals.
As long as there's no other rebuttals.
Yes, Bob.
I suppose that would be something that could be worked on, but...
Well, as long as there's no other rebuttals, we can look at, from the roadway to the actually one to the other.
Right.
If it does, people on the knob, talking portion of that property, might have rights to not deem the pass and re-pass across the link.
We're just realigning.
That's true. And that complicates the problem a little bit, because now it's not considered just a private road.
I mean, it may not be an issue, but if we don't want to create one.
We think it's a private right-of-way to our benefit. It's really a path in the woods right now. It's a paper street.
We're going from a gravel road, a gravel way, and now we're down to a path. You've got to be careful when you say that, because somebody lives up on the other end. They're ancient deep, they have the rights to pass and re-pass across Kahoon Way, then it becomes a lot more complicated of a problem, you know, versus just upgrading an existing gravel road.
Yeah, I want to see the title insurance company come back at you and say, you know, there's a roadway running through this lot, so if we need to address it now...
We'll address it.
Can you touch on setbacks of some of the homes? Some of the homes look quite close to the road, and you're talking about a garage in the front of the home and a driveway. Could you just touch on that a little bit? It looks like the homes that are single-digit numbers, I'm sorry, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, they seem to be closer to the roadway than most of the others.
Right. Essentially, there are five different styles of homes that we're looking at, and the roof lines change whether they run with the lot or they run perpendicular, depending on what we have for the elbow room. Essentially, the ones that get the closest will still have a minimum of a driveway that will accommodate one car outside the garage. So you're looking at a setback maybe 30 feet for the garage, being the closest to the road. And we have 50 feet between each of the houses.
It's hard to say here, so I assumed that you had good distance, but I just wanted to make sure. So you're thinking 30 feet might be a minimum frontage?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you proposing parking in front of a house on the street?
That would be something that we'd have to take a look at in terms of...
Because very few homes nowadays, whether it's one bedroom or two, one-car deal doesn't quite work too often in town, it seems.
We are looking at two parking spaces, one garage, one in the driveway, but we all know how garages...
Garages don't, yeah, they don't last as good as their owners.
Right. So given that we're looking at private roads, it would be something that would be part of the overall development package, how you handle parking on the street. We do have locations that we've identified that would help alleviate someone that's going to have a family party. We have parking areas nearby that we can use for that, but day-to-day, that's a good question we're having.
Another, the original section of the condos up above, kind of the same layout, we have a garage with an apron in this. Although some of them have garages across the street. I think the initial section, they actually put garages across the street. One building could be a garage for three different units.
You started to mention the timeline as to when you would perceive going to a definitive plan?
We would like to go as soon as the process allows us to.
Could you touch on, if you just look at the 115 residences, not any of the other open space or anything, how much actual land are you allocating if you took the total measurements of all the lots? Do you know that number? Is it?
It was about 12 to 15 acres of the 140 total, approximately.
So an average lot...
It's about 12 to 15.
An average lot size is?
Average lot size is between 6,000 square feet and 12,000 square feet.
Can we kick these?
Yeah, I'm not sure how well they've been distributed. I think, I think everything is right here, so I would say none of the plans...
Can I make notes on this?
I don't know who, what are the boards receiving?
So this is going to be a 55 and over community, or?
I think by the nature of the product that we're designing, it's going to be an older group. It's not going to be proposed to be an age-restricted 55 and over.
So it's not going to be, well, semi-retired or young startup?
This is, in our opinion, not sure what the term semi-retired means, but we think it's an over 45 group that's looking to downsize, simplify. That's the type of house that we're designing and have the benefit of the amenity of a golf course community in a beautiful town like Onset. We think that part of this profile is going to be someone that is a permanent resident. We think it's someone that is here nine months out of the year, somewhere else, three months out of the year, and we think part of the profile might be this is the summer home and a more permanent resident somewhere else. So it's an older crowd. We're not doing four-bedroom colonials, and we're the expectation of children living on a golf course community like this.
You know, because I'm looking at, you know, the lot size, and by not being age-restricted, it opens it up to basically anybody. Say, a young couple just gets married, they buy their first home, they have a TV broke, they got two or three kids, pop up, seeing the next couple of years. It's a small lot to stick, some, you know, little kids to run around on. Next you know, they're out there stealing a guy's golf balls, and the guy's throwing clubs at them. I'm looking at, you know, the overall effect, you know, to even have limited to that environment, because it is so congested. Something to think about.
Are you, you be looking for any waivers that you know of at this point?
Yeah, on the, on the title sheet, on the first page, on the bottom right-hand corner. Now, we don't plan on utilizing sidewalks on all of it, or sidewalks on a portion of it. We're just going to utilize sidewalks on a portion of the development, and I know the regulations require sidewalks on all subdivisions. Also too, the streets will have Cape Cod berms rather than granite curbing, and the private right-of-way width, the total width of the private right-of-way will be 35 feet with a pavement width of 22. We have a typical cross-section in the plan sets that we had submitted. We have a typical cross-section in the plan sets that we had submitted for that.
Could you touch on lighting for the proposed subdivision? Could you touch on street lighting? What are you proposing? Have you got that far yet?
We really haven't. The concern is obviously the entry drive, certainly Bay Point Drive. We're looking at some sort of lighting standard that would certainly cover the twenty-two feet width. And give some consistency for people that are perhaps coming to a function or a house. The lighting on the remainder of the streets, we've talked about keeping at very low level. I don't know if we would probably restrict ourselves to the intersections or to a particular curvature with standard light fixtures. But perhaps in other locations, it would be a low-level fixture. We're looking at certainly dark-skinned client light fixtures, but we're just trying to keep the entire light level down except where it's needed along the simple spot.
There's a hundred and fifteen proposed homes and they are separated a little bit. Is it all going to be one association or are you proposing multiple associations? Like the duplexes will be in their own and the single families will be in their own or what's the thought process there?
So it'll be one homeowners' association. Every unit will be required to be a participant in it. Under master plan, if you have party walls, the duplex units will have to be organized as a condominium. And you won't be conveying a fee simple interest in the real estate. So the single-family homes will be fee simple and the duplex units will be organized within themselves as a condominium. Part of the homeowners' association.
Right.
So it'll be-
And in the homeowners' association, can you touch on what maintenance issues will be? Association requirements and what issues might be the homeowners' requirements?
So, with respect to the fee interest homes, we want to really do four things. We want to maintain the exterior, the landscaping, the lawn cutting, the shrubbery, the snow removal. We want to paint your house over a certain period of time, I believe it's six or seven years. It would be scheduled and funded and the painting would be complete. We'll have a reserve for the road and utility component of the program, both the placement reserve on a long-term basis as well as snow removal and maintenance of the road.
Yeah.
That's really the extent of what we want this homeowners' association to provide. We think that's going to give us a competitive edge compared to other similar communities where they have very high monthly maintenance fees.
Okay, so I heard landscaping, maintenance, paint the home, and snow removal. What was the fourth?
Road.
Road.
Maintenance of the road.
Maintenance of road. And how are you going to handle maintenance of the homes? You know, roofs and guys' downspouts, is that going to be-
You are, you're a homeowner. It's your home.
So that stays their responsibility.
Your own, it's responsible.
So you're just handling painting on a rotating schedule?
We want to maintain the character and look and appearance of the property.
Yeah.
And the homeowner is going to maintain their home like they do any other home that they own.
Is this build-out for the, total build-out for Bay Point, for the entire parcel or?
Yes, yes, this is the master plan that we're seeking approval for.
The bylaw that created the conference recreational, in rereading it, it was heavily cited towards mixed use, which I think we had the discussion during the initial. I don't think anybody here has their blinders on as to how successful that would be. We do have to look into it a little more and see if it is a mandatory.
So we consider that component of that requirement to be taken in totality. We have invested a substantial amount of money in the Pavilion Building. We took a building that was vacant and had little or no use and we turned it into a vibrant banquet, social catering facility. We'll do eighty-six events in that building this year. So we think we've taken a use that didn't really exist at the time we acquired the property, two years ago, three years ago. And we've created a vibrant business in the Pavilion Building. We continue to try to advance the conversation in the clubhouse to turn it into a vibrant restaurant. We believe that the residential use is consistent with the mixed-use requirement in that provision. And obviously the golf. And when you add up those five components of what's taking place on the one hundred and forty-acre parcel, we really believe that we've met that hurdle of mixed-use environment.
And the other, we used to call for blah-blah, I guess you still do, the building in on the right, is that on the Cedar own property?
Yes, it is.
What kind of? I guess we have to see that these plans are circulated so in case there are any other comments that need to be addressed. And also, some sort of determination about Kahoon Road. See if, Kahoon Street, whatever it is, to see if that is something, if it's just a cutback from this, I don't think you have an issue.
Say it again?
I think you want to, I think you want to determine whether it is or not before you get going.
That other modification you referenced at the curve, that is currently your private road or is that part of Cedar's property? I'm not quite sure what Cedar's property is, but-
Yeah, the modifications for two reasons. Right now, the road currently comes in and does a tee.
Yes.
Wheel that you're done is on. Right, the curvature is just outside.
So we're sweeping the curvature on our top and not on the Cedar.
Yeah.
So we have to modify that section and that section. But the other thing is that it allows us to create a tee section.
Right, right. So it's the flow more than an appearance. You'll be able to landscape it nicer and make it look more attractive. I'm not a big golfer, but I am a golfer. And the outbuilding that you're proposing for the maintenance, it seems to be set back from most of the roads, other than the few houses that look like they're going to be right there.
That's an existing building.
It is an existing-
That's not new construction. That building exists, so we will prove that.
Yeah.
But that building exists.
It will become quite a bit more active once you move your maintenance facility there, I have to imagine. And so I assume you're looking into making it look nicer, landscaping it for sound and for appearance, I assume, at some point?
All of it.
Yeah. My concern was mostly noise because I know, you know, the machines do fire up early in the morning and you are proposing some homes quite close to it. So we didn't want to hear from residents of your new subdivision that they're being disrupted weekends, mornings, nights. So.
Yeah, I'm sure you get people to bike, pop it down a golf course and then complain that he loaned more.
The track is too loud.
It's like buying next to an airport and complaining about planes. I would like to make sure this gets circulated amongst the other boards before we do anything with it.
We provided copies to the Board of Health and the Town Clerk, in addition to the multiple sets that-
Yeah, and judging by the amount of sets that are here, I would say that nobody's picked them up. As you said, you know, our planning department is a little thin right now, so I'll just confirm that these have been circulated and get comments back to you. And I guess that's all we need to do at this particular point. Any other issues you think they need to attend to?
I think the only things that I see as concerns are parking at the residences on-street or at the residence itself. I like the idea of trying to find some alternative parking areas so that when visitors do come or our family comes, that the street is not blocked, especially where you've asked for, you know, some revisions on the layout of the road. The other concern is, I know you're trying to maximize the amount of homes, but lot size at six thousand square feet is a little concerning to me. Sounds quite small.
So, conceptually, for the most part, everyone's backyard is a hundred and forty acres. So these are lines on a piece of paper.
Right.
But what you're going to see is, you're going to see a canopy of existing trees that add to the protection of the home with respect to the golf course. And you're going to see a golf course. You're going to have a backyard that is bigger than any of us probably have right now. So we think that the organization of the cluster units is one that's going to create a real sense of community and a real feel about it that is going to give you circulation and give you a real streetscape that you're going to wander down and really be comfortable with. The read from home to home, some will have stone walls in front of them, some will have hedges, some will have white fences as you travel down this street. You're not focusing on lot size. You're focusing on the organization of how the units read with respect one to the other. On the backside of all these units, they really, they have a-
They have a panoramic view, but they don't have, but they don't have the ability to use the land because it's the golf course. Just so you know, I have homes, a number of homes in communities like this, so I'm very familiar with the living style. So, to me, at six thousand feet, that family has very limited use of yard or personal space. And you certainly don't want them to be utilizing your golf course as their personal space, so-
But when you, when you look at the alternative form of ownership in many developments like this, the easiest thing for a developer to do is come in with fourplexes and eightplexes.
Right.
And then you look at it and you say, what is, what is that person's use of a shared area that's really zero? So we think we've created some neat space where someone with a flair for gardening, a flair for maintaining, you know, a particular area, we view that as a real marketing process. So, the alternative choice compared to this, we think we, we think we're really doing the right thing.
What's the price range?
So that's to be determined, obviously. It's a function of when we can actually get started. Design square footage today ranges from thirteen hundred fifty square feet to about nineteen hundred square feet.
You have a ballpark, you give it all.
Pardon me?
You must have a ballpark, figure.
I do, that's where I'm going. So we think that the range is going to be from three hundred and twenty-five thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand. And we also think that in some instances, someone might want to come in and say, well, you know, I want the basement built out. All these units will have full basements. Or they might want to do something that will create a little higher price point than the four hundred and fifty thousand. But right now, that's what we think is the target price point for the product that we're talking about.
At what stage? I know you've got some preliminary plans here of the designs, but at what stage will you have more specifics relative to the actual homes and amenities?
We'll have them for the final approval. We'll have the program very well scoped out specifically and exactly the units and the contents of the units and what's in it and the amenities within the units.
One of your waivers that you're looking for is no sidewalks. People like to walk these days.
So the concept here, and we're in the process of looking through that right now, no sidewalks in the sense of an eight-foot concrete sidewalk. What we want to do is have permeable sidewalks and paths so that you're traveling down a stone dust sidewalk or some other form of landscape other than squares of concrete traveling down the road. So there will be travel lanes and paths, but they'll be permeable rather than impermeable.
Similar to your cat paths on the course?
Similar, similar feel to that.
Any passive recreation?
Pardon me?
Any recreation?
No, we talked about that at length and we've done some market analysis and we've spent a lot of time with, in meetings with dozens and dozens of brokers. And they always want to know, where's the pool, where's the health club, where's the amenity, where's the other activities? So we could have done that. And then all that does is add to the monthly fee. When you're maintaining the pool and the health club and other types of amenities, you wind up in a competitive set that exists today with a five hundred dollar maintenance fee. And what we're trying to do is to provide an alternative to the Pine Hills or some of the other competitive set. And our attitude is that Wareham arguably has one of the nicest YMCA's that we've seen anywhere. That's your health club. You've got five miles of beautiful beach, that's your pool. And we're trying to deliver a product that's golf-oriented and home-specific oriented and a little less on the amenity side of the program. And that's a marketing decision that we think is going to prove to be very effective.
When you talked about trails, you mean similar to Pine Hills? I'm sure you've been to Pine Hills, but where they don't have sidewalks on many of their streets, but there's a trail on one side meandering along the roads? That's what you're talking about?
That's what we're talking about.
So the neighbors will be able to walk freely and not have to cross the road and-
The neighbors will walk through that community freely and travel the length of the roadways that you're seeing, not on the road.
Okay.
On a, on a, on a path. Some of the paths might have small wooden fences to divide from the Cape Cod berm. It'll be defined and it'll be very Cape Cod-ish. It'll look like it belongs and it'll look like it was, it's been there for a long time.
So your whole drainage plan will work on a low-impact basis?
Yes.
As well as taking advantage of your stormwater for irrigation?
Correct.
If there's no more questions or concerns, I will make sure these get circulated and see if we can get some responses back before our next meeting. Which is the twenty-fifth? Oh, I'm going to look it up. Back up. Don't want it to be August already. Twenty-eighth, thank you. Get that right. Two weeks.
Yes?
Oh, just, uh, looking at your shoulders, I said.
I like, I love the lots. But you gotta make sure that they are, uh, is attractive and safe.
Yeah, I have no comments back from anybody here, so.
I think they can fix them. No, I, that doesn't bother me too much. I think, you know, I think they can do a good job of cleaning that up. I just don't know how it affects these folks on the drive. This way. These folks here. Yeah, it's busy. It's busy.
Might be an age perspective makes it tougher.
The, um, the parcel that you referenced that's under lease, I believe, until two thousand eighteen, is that, that's this right-hand side of this entrance road?
Yes.
And I'm sure that, um, at that point, you'll revisit whether you'll extend that. I assume it's your lease that you've extended now, or you will do some development there at some point?
We have, uh, over the past several months, been working hard with, trying to talk to Cedar about the purchase of that property. What we would propose to do with the property in the event that we purchase it is to provide adequate parking, well-lit, for the pavilion operation, which doesn't exist today, and for the golf course operation, which doesn't exist today. You, you walk out of that clubhouse into mud.
Right.
And it is really preventing us from having the opportunity to run a restaurant on a year-round basis that would invite people other than people that are there playing golf. So, for the most part, the changes that would be made to that would be improvements to the clubhouse, which is in desperate need of repair.
Right.
And improvements to the parking, which would change dramatically. Be paved, be well-lit, and actually provide a safe, secure area for patrons to come in and utilize the facility. That would be the proposed use that we're talking to Cedar about for that property. And if that's what you mean by development of that property, that's what we're trying to do.
Well, I just wondered if you meant other than the parking?
No, it needs to, it needs to adequately service these wonderful businesses that were really revitalizing at the Bay Point Club.
So, change the power on the golf course at all?
Pardon me?
Have you cha, will it change the, I think the undercover recreational, it has to remain a par?
No, the power will remain. We've hired a golf course architect, Tim Garrish, and we've made some real substantial improvements to the layout and conditioning of the golf course. We're doing some very environmentally sensitive or correct improvements to the golf course to minimize water usage and chemicals and everything required that goes on to a golf course. We have a couple of small relocation of holes, but the power will remain the same, and that will, that will be unchanged. But the golf course will receive substantial investment from what we're doing that we think also will add to the marketability of, of the homes and the success of the overall project.
When you met with us initially, weren't you talking about changing a few holes of the golf course around?
Yes. We, that, I'm happy to go through those with you if you like. Basically, if you're familiar with the golf course, the first hole is up of what is the equivalent of a ski slope from a golfer's perspective, kinda turns rapidly to the left and is a par five. These improvements contemplate leveling out the ski slope somewhat and having a par four at the top of the hill. We think when we clear and get that green located, we think you're actually gonna be able to see the water, the inlet, whatever the inlet is that is on the other side of the cranberry box down where, um, the most recent condominiums were built. So, we like that a lot. That's the high point of the property. From there, you'll go a short distance to a new set of tees that will be a par three, and it will go down just slightly below where the first green currently is. So, we'll go from a four to a three, and the third hole will then become a par five, and that's how we keep the, the par the same. And the twelfth hole will be eliminated. That's why we're building the new par three, the twelfth hole is a par three. We're building the new second hole as a par three. That's a one-to-one replacement. And then, we're gonna go back to playing the old fourth hole, which is a dogleg right par four that has been closed for a number of years. So, the existing par three, four will close, and we'll go back to the dogleg right par four that was part of the original design. So, the balance of the changes really are improvements to condition, bunkers, terrain, elevation, sightlines, views, tree maintenance, and improvements along those lines.
In recent years, we've had a condition on Anza Dab with some flooding from a pond that I guess is off your property, but I don't know if it's a result of some change made on the golf course.
So, everything closed out. There's been no change. This is the nine hole. This was in its existing condition since the creation of the course was built. The one thing we are doing is we're trying to create a retention base and actually we need to build and use the water inside of the obstacles. So, better natural shedding is occurring, occurring this way. We're holding the capture to use it on the corners. And so, this is a new and this will help. This is an obvious interaction with this. If that winds up being feasible.
Right.
This is a design concept. This, this would be a real management.
Yes, I don't know what changed over the last five years or so. This is a whole group several phases. I don't know what changed up. Yes, I, oh, between there and there.
We haven't made any changes on it, so I don't know.
Could change. Find out somewhere. So, I guess we'll see you on the twenty-eighth, I guess?
Terrific. Thank you very much for your time. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I was, I had in my head that we were doing a public hearing day and it's preliminary.
See us on the twenty-eighth, you mean the next planning board hearing?
Yeah.
July twenty-eighth? Okay.
We should have any, we should have responses back on the boards.
You have a nice night.
See you again.
Thank you so much. Take good care.
This has to stay.
Thank you. Very good.
You're gonna, you're gonna write us a note?
See you later, Lippy.
I did, I did have some paperwork on that A and R. So, I only see one plan.
Denied lack of informed information.
Well, the rest of them could be over the planning board. I guess what they're, they're looking to create this plot.
Where's the frontage? Well, the access over there by Alan's hand.
Yeah.
They gave, they created frontage, but more like this. Hundred ninety-nine feet of frontage. This house faces the street.
Is the feelings? Same family? It's up by, uh?
I don't think so.
By him?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't, I don't.
Is this sofa hotel?
Yeah. Yeah. It's off the bat, anyway.
Okay.
I mean, the question is, but one of the questions is, even though they do demonstrate the lot shape factor, the, um, do you think that meets the intent?
I don't think so.
No, it doesn't.
But, to me, can't they apply for a special permit and not do that silliness?
Well, it's paper anyway. That's, that's only on paper, just to create that.
All I'm saying is, you know, if, in a lot of towns, if you have a castle like that, and you can show access and required square footage and frontage, couldn't they just make that a drive for one home? I mean, is that really required?
Well, actually, they could show, instead of this, they could just come in us. Then they may not have the, uh, amount of upland needed.
Right. It's ten acres, one point four nine acres. So, they get twenty-eight thousand feet of upland.
Salt marsh.
Very streets down near the playground, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, this is one of those little streets that go from Avenue Way down to
Just there today.
Where is that?
You go down Sandwich Road and Avenue Way is right by the parking station. Go there, you go farther down Cherry and pick it up. It's on the left-hand side. That used to be, at one time, some of that had, they put a beach in there somewhere next to the, uh,
Playground.
Playground. They had, the beach is long gone. It was all back to Salt Marsh.
Playground would be way over here.
Way over there. We're just, well, today, looking to fix up the playground for them.
Again?
Just, yeah. Kayak ramp and that.
What happened Oakdale, a long time ago, Oakdale was a lot of, lot of what they call cottage lots.
Yep.
A lot of tiny ones. What happened was, over the years, somebody went and says, okay, you can use this property here, and all of a sudden, the road disappeared. There's a few of them down there. You go down Cherry Street, you get down there, this gentleman calls his carport, became a garage, goes right across.
Straight. The street, Cherry Street runs right into his garage.
And it's, it has been like that for, uh?
Well, that was my next question. Was Cherry Street intended to go to the river?
Straight all the way through?
Yeah, supposed to.
That was the frontage for this guy here. So, now, by eminent domain, you go whatever.
Google, and you Google the property area?
This is part of the structure.
You can see, you can see the street coming down. You can see the dirt road section where the paving stops, and then you see his garage. It goes right in.
And, and ninety percent of the houses down in Oakdale are all like that, because at one time, it was a lot of families. So, I'm like, no problem, you can use it. You know, oh, can I, can I use this for my garden? Next thing you know, hey, can I have my land back? I wanna build a house. I'm like, oh, no, no, that's mine. And they got wars born on. Families change, property changes. Next thing you know, somebody comes in, boom, there's a house here. Oh, the house has been there for thirty years. What do you do with this poor bastard in the back? We don't have any land.
Well, that was, that was the way this was built, where this property is landlocked.
That's right.
Is it legally landlocked, or does it have access on Cherry Street?
Technically, it has, I think it has access on Cherry Street.
If you, if you, if you go, if you go back, older lay of Cherry, or, or that area, you're gonna see Cherry Street all the way through, all the way down.
I think on Cherry, you have to go through the guys who actually continue.
Right. So, what do you do? The gr, the grads that got built, who knows when?
Well, see, that's what I'm trying to avoid with these guys. They're putting somebody's house in the middle of Kahoon Street.
Right.
Oh, shit, yeah. They're making a mess on you. You know, the whole problem, that old part of Kahoon Street down by the passage gas station, where he said, they went from gravel to path. So, who's gonna take care of it? The thing is?
They have to.
Well, they're going to relocate that onto their.
Right. So, they could re-shift it around. But the thing is, with Cape Cod burning from our household, one's car in the driveway, maybe two cars, it becomes gypsy parking lots.
That's not enough.
You pull up on the grass.
Yeah. I, I'm not for that.
The thing is, you're, you're creating it though, man.
No, but my notes here are, the concerns are the lot size. Parking is a huge issue for me. I think every house should have two parking spaces on their property.
It should be two on the outside.
Right.
Unless a house should have a garage too.
They gotta move Kahoon, so they gotta check titles. And the sidewalks, I'm not opposed to sidewalks, as long as they can show walking paths.
You know how small it is over there? You'd have all skinny women walking around there. You can't have no good-looking ladies.
Skinny's good.
Sticks and single file. You can't walk hip to hip.
But I, I, you know.
They had the, over at Crane Landing, that's all perimeter path, isn't it?
Crane, Crane Landing is, uh?
Yeah, and this is paved.
Yeah, it's paved.
It, it meanders through there, but the thing is, you've got plenty of room. The thing is, how are you gonna meander through? You've got six thousand square feet, and all of a sudden, you're gonna pack me in and across your front yard?
Well, I don't know which lot is, I don't know which lot is six thousand square feet. I look at my neighborhood, eight to, you know, six to nine thousand square feet. As we age, that's all you wanna take care of.
Right, right.
Well, the other thing that The thing that bothered me, though, is saying six thousand feet. But my concern is, A, walking paths. So, now it's not six thousand feet anymore, because you got the walking path that's four foot wide, right? So, you're giving that up. Then, I also think every, I think every house should have two parking spaces off-street.
Yes, I agree with you.
Without question, because
And the grass shouldn't be considered as well.
No, no, I, and I agree with that. I, I really believe that, so.
A good example is, go, go to Parkwood, go to Riverside, you know, Anza. Okay, you've got cottages. You know, it's, okay, you've got cottages. All of a sudden, they come back thirty years later, you know, garage was converted, there's no parking.
The next thing you know, somebody's put in a kiosk in front of your house.
Oh, how do you, how do you create something like that in a brainy property? You know, those are existing conditions you have to live with. Because they were done forty, fifty years ago.
I think these guys have the beauty right now of, they could...
They could do anything they want to do.
They could do that.
But the thing is, I think they want way, way too much.
Well, you have to decide, are 115 homes too many or should it be 100 or should it...
The upgrind, I think, is fine, there was duplexes.
Are we still recording?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can't say anything.
Yeah, wait.
They were supposed to be in tonight with the full-size mile out. I don't know why they're not.
All right, the table up there?
Give us a chance to look at the Cherry Street.
How are we going for time?
It was...
Was the one that I was submitted, you know, this before the meeting or was it just a little time off?
I'm pretty sure that we looked at that...
July 9th.
We looked at that today. We were down there, you know, by the playground stuff. And we looked, one street to the left is Cherry Street. And I was looking at the map and looking at the Google overlay and I just said, there's a building here. And she, and it was Sharon Gomes.
Yeah.
And Sharon said, yeah. I said, that's an issue, isn't it? She says, yeah, it's been there a while. There's a little discussion about that. I said, but that, that's the garage place, yeah? That's on the road.
Yeah.
That's not offset, that's on the road. The guy who's got the house down there put a garage right on the Cherry Street.
Well, how do you get a permit?
I don't think he even bothered to get one back then.
Back then, how long has it been then?
If you go up Cherry Street, take a left, you're heading back up. You know, you take a first right. Okay, goes back by the water. I went back about fifteen years ago. I know we denied four lots back there, same deal. There was no access because it was all cut off on Cherry Street. There was one, two, three homes where the extensions went down to the other road, gone. Guy says, oh, man, right away, it's not our problem. That's a, that's a simple issue.
Yeah.
Somebody's got a house built across your driveway or your road. It's not the town's problem to go and the town shouldn't go and says, okay, we're sorry because Alan went and built the garage, so we're gonna go and we're gonna recreate and change the laws for you.
Right.
It doesn't work there, we're not...
They'll give you a good piece of land for you.
Where?
Down there.
I don't know how to get there.
You could build a nice, small, nice little big barn, you'd be all set.
Hey, there's one right behind it, Hebrew Church. Nice tall house, three stories, water view.
I don't want a water view. I wanna be...
It's away from the water, it's not floods.
I wanna be quiet.
The address is 80 Cherry Street.
Yeah. Really? Whoa.
Yeah, what does that tell you?
That's down by the water.
Go take back and call Charlie Lowery, tell him you're going to the archives. I wanna see Oakdale, no layout. Oh, he called me, yes, that's his office. Okay, no sheep.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I think we're here to help people get what they wanna do, but we also don't wanna...
But the thing...
Prostitute the town to the point where it's a hodgepodge of houses that make absolutely no sense.
The thing is, this was a beach community, Mike. It happens all the time prior to zoning. We do it all the time in Parkland. We do it all the time in Swiss Beach. I know of three houses in Swiss Beach that had five illegal cottages in the back. All of a sudden, there were garages, there were sheds, they were converted into cottages. I mean, these things are probably 10 by 20.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, they wanted to buy the property, they got six, they got six properties with one driveway going in. You can't stop them, it was done prior to zoning. So do you keep on going that way?
No.
You have to stop someplace.
You gotta stop it.
And if you buy a piece of property, like you have a piece of property that you know you purchased, it has a problem, the problem is yours, not ours.
Right.
You know, you already can feel bad for somebody for so long.
I don't see, unless they're planning to build something there for a family member. With the flood insurance and the, and the building standard you have to meet in that area, I don't... I don't see it being possible.
I didn't see the grade elevation, but...
It's low.
You're almost in the marsh.
Well, then you get it, and you have to be, what, 18 feet now, right?
Well, I'm not sure they're in that velocity, but they're still got issues.
I mean, I don't wanna say no to anybody. I just, but I don't wanna keep making up these silly jagged lots and, you know, making exceptions for people. I just don't think that's...
Yeah, because sometimes, you know, sometimes you're gonna come back.
And I don't think it's, yeah, to the benefit of the town. I don't, I really don't think that the town benefits with that kind of situation. Because you're not attracting...
You're not making it any...
Although I was driving through Norton, Sunday, yesterday, and I saw a lot of the older homes had a winding driveway that fed two and three houses back out again and, you know...
Used to have that up in Acton and Stone, all those years.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, we don't have...
We used to have what I call pole trap lots everywhere.
We don't have a back lot, by lot here, but it does make very interesting changes.
Yeah.
Yeah. We had a lot of that.
Because it's big acreage inside it, very narrow. Yeah, you have to have the land though. You know, I think that's nice if you have...
Well, they've got a lot of land there, but most of it's marsh.
Right, right. They got 28,000 feet of upland in there.
Which is a good-sized lot.
Yeah, yep.
You wouldn't want them to come in with five condos.
No.
Forty B. Section two, she closed. Take a motion to close.
Adjourn?
We're closing the meeting.
Adjourn the meeting.
To adjourn, yes.
Second.
Would you like to discuss that?
No.
All in favor?
I'm totally confused, Bob.
All right, Bob, we'll shut it up.
I was confused too.
Okay, now what do you want to say?